I will call to order the meeting of the study session for the planning commission of the city of San Clemente for Wednesday, August 5th, 2020. And Gabriel, is Gabriel on, or?
Gabriel is not going yet. Actually, he's in.
I'm sorry, Jennifer, I couldn't hear you.
He's joining right now.
Okay. We tricked you, Gabriel, and we started on time today, so. So, I just called us to order.
Great. I am here, yes.
Okay, great, so I will ask you to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Kaczynski?
Here.
Commissioner Crandall?
Here.
Chair Protem Wu?
Here.
Vice Chair Blackwell?
Here.
And Chair Berlin?
Here. And we have one item on our study session, the continuation of our zoning ordinance amendments discussion. We have three more sections to cover tonight, and Jennifer will be taking us through and letting us know, giving us an overview where we need it. Jennifer, do you want to take it?
Yes, thank you, Jennifer Savage, Senior Planner with the City of San Clemente. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Myself, as well as Christopher Wright, Associate Planner 2 with the City of San Clemente, will be presenting the subject areas for tonight's study session. We have definitions, non-conforming, and accessory dwelling units. The format for this evening will be the same as the first study session, whereby I will, we will allot 30 minutes for each study session subject area, and I will, please forgive me in advance, interrupt you or the discussion with five minutes left within that 30 minutes. This will enable us to get through all of the subject areas, at least touch on them and get some direction from the planning commissioners, and allow us time at the end of those 90 minutes to close out this evening's study session with any follow-up questions and discuss next steps. I will begin with the first subject area, which is definitions. This subject area covers 11 different items. Most of these items are to add clarity to terms that are already used in the regulations or that there was confusion about in our codes. Other definitions that are addressed in this subject area are to address a planning commission interpretation and current regulations for state law. So what we're looking for tonight is for direction and discussion, and any questions or comments from the planning commission on these particular proposed amendments to the code. And again, these are considerations to change the definitions, so you have, you have the floor to make any recommendations on what to pursue and not to pursue as we move forward with the zoning amendments. That concludes staff presentation, and we look forward to your discussion and direction.
All right, do any planning commissioners have, you know, questions or observations for staff?
Sure, this is Bart. Jennifer, can you tell me, are we going through just the definitions for the first section right now, or are we going through all definitions?
We are going through all of the definitions that are contained in Attachment 2, starting on page 6 in your packet.
Okay, and for each one, can you give us an explanation of why we are modifying the existing definition, to make sure that the modification does what we're trying to have it do?
Yes, absolutely. So, the first definition is alleys, and that's there to create a clarification of the term alley that's used in Title 17, and it would add a reference to the engineering technical specifications in regards to setbacks for garages, carports, and parking spaces that back out into the alley. Cultural facilities is proposed.
Can we comment on each one as we go by them?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
For alleys, it seems we're making the assumption that the property line is on the edge of the alley. I'm sure in like the Los Melinos district, all the property lines run down the center of the alley, and the alley is maintained by the property owners rather than the city, as opposed to the alleys we have up in the T-zone. So, does this, I'm questioning whether this addresses all those different types of conditions for setback?
Let's see, for engineering technical specifications, it would address all of those scenarios. In terms of setbacks, I will take a look at those conditions at Los Melinos when we come back with this at the public hearing.
Okay, very good, because I think that's quite, we may find that in the business districts, I'm, excuse me, the investor districts and all also. So we need to find all the different types of setups where it, sometimes it's an easement on the property, sometimes it's a property line down the center of the alley, so the setbacks wouldn't be from the same place. You know, some width of the alley has to be determined, and that might be in the deeds, so it may be more complicated than we think in reality.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, if there is an easement on a property, the, even if the setback would put a structure within that easement, the easement language itself would not allow construction within the easement. So it would then, by way of the easement, require greater setbacks than would, than would be the case without that easement.
Right, it would allow you to build up, the deed would allow you to build up to the edge of the easement, but then we're looking to have at least, assuming 24-foot back-up space into the alley, which 12 may be to the center of the alley on the easement, so it just needs a little more looking into.
Thank you.
Another comment too, and I could be wrong about this because I can't think of a specific example, I just feel like I've seen it. The definition of the alley is that it's a secondary means of access to a budding property, but I seem to, I seem to think that we've got places in town where we call them alleys, but it's either the main or the only way to access the building. For instance, maybe the front entrance of the building is on the alley, or there just isn't any other street that you could reasonably get to that building. So, like I said, I can't, I can't give you specific examples, this is just sort of my feeling from over the years, but I'm, are we sure that this is the definition we want if we do have some small streets that might be considered alleys, just sort of in terms of how they look or feel? But now we're treating them as streets, and maybe they would have a different setback from what we might normally have as a result?
I think you've got a good observation, that I think the word secondary may not always apply, it may actually be a primary access opportunity for vehicles, maybe not for pedestrians, but certainly for vehicles.
One of the primary alleys down in Los Melinos that goes down, past the Els Club and down there, is actually a street name to it, although it looks like an alley. And it's considered an alley, but we actually have a street naming, so some of your points are exactly right, the business does, some of the businesses down there front onto that street slash alley.
Yeah, even.
Probably own.
At least the northern part of the Paseo, there are homes there, for instance, where there, you know, there's garages and, you know, stairs to the upstairs apartment units, that sort of thing, on the alley, so it could be considered a primary access in that respect. So we may want to think about that, the term secondary, or really make sure we, you know, we don't have any unintended consequences.
Thank you, staff will definitely take a look at that and see where there may be conflicts for multiple reasons throughout the city. And is there anyone else that wanted to have input on alley?
If the alley, if that is not used as a secondary means of access, is the property still subject to requirement, the same setback requirement?
Yes, and so if you have an alley, there is the potential that there are scenarios in the city where the alley would be considered the front. If the alley is considered your rear, in cases of such as the through lot, you would still potentially have a front setback there for the primary dwelling.
Anything else on the alley definition? Okay, we can go to the next one.
Thank you, and I'm going to go a little out of order here in just an interest in time, and so I'm going to skip cultural facilities and go to hedges, chimney height, roof element, and lot depth. The four of those definitions were put in to add clarification where there were questions. Hedges are considered in a section with fences, it's been confusing on how to measure chimney height for both applicants and staff. It's also been confusing about what is a roof element in terms of measuring a building height, and there are also instances where it's confusing on measuring lot depth, and the proposed amendments for lot depth would help, it wouldn't solve every scenario, given the unique configurations of some parcels in the city, but would help to some degree.
Jennifer, some comments on the roof element. I think the current definition is not accurate, there are many reasons. A building may have different plate height, may not have, in other words, the front plate height may be different from the backside, so they may have different plate heights, or a concrete building may not have a plate at all. So, in my understanding, the roof, the roof element would be the part of the roof that is separate from one, separate one from others by walls. Just imagine you land on a roof, on a high point of a roof, and you start moving around, by the time you have a sudden drop vertically, and that's the boundary of your roof element. So, and we mentioned a ridge, a flat roof will not have a ridge, a roof with a parapet, roof deck, they don't have a ridge. So there are a lot of things to be, to be cleaned up here on the roof element definition.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I will.
Yeah, I will jump on, Jen, on that one. We're looking at roof areas of a roof, and using a plate, I think we had a definition of a plate, and we've been through this before, is not necessarily a wall with a top plate on it, but the structural support for the roof rafters and members. So, for a concrete building or block, it's where that roof is bolted to the wall, but we do have shed roofs that don't have a ridge, but two different plate heights. We have domed roofs that have the same plate height, no ridge, but it has a height. It almost seems like it could be almost impossible to try to craft one that talks about every structural element and condition and anticipate them. So, I think it might be easier to just have this as roof planes and the height of them, and just say the low port and the high point, and then go from there. When definitions get so complicated, sometimes we're trying to do too much. And we have a section for slope lots of how to calculate the roof heights and the high points of roofs, which seems to work pretty well, I think, Jennifer. Have you talked to building about that, their application of that section?
We actually discussed this with the planners, because it is the planners that take a look at that definition and use that method for measuring height. And it is from the planner's direction that we wanted to clarify the roof element, specifically because the measuring height was put in place to encourage buildings to be constructed that would slope with the down or up slope of a property. And rather than getting that, the way that it's measured now is by averaging across the roof, you actually get non-varied roof planes. So, this is Steph's attempt to encourage that. It sounds like doesn't work, and then perhaps the method that we currently have in place without a roof element definition does work.
Well, I think roof element is fine, and I could just, that's what we should define rather than all these other little things, because architects, and I've been through this numerous times, have fits when planning and building don't use the same terminology or the same processes for measuring things like roofs and all. So, I would definitely think any of these definitions etc. should be run by head of Building Department also to coordinate and do the best we can to have a uniformity between the two departments.
Thank you.
Jennifer, I think, I think your goal is, is good. We're trying to achieve that objective, but I just don't see how this new definition will solve the problem you identified.
I understand Steph will take a look at it again and see if there is a way to meet our goal, and if not, we will express that at the public hearing.
Perfect.
Anything else on those definitions?
Chimney height. The fact of the matter is now, the only chimneys we're going to have are chimneys that are vents for gas-fired appliances. You cannot have a wood-burning fireplace anymore. Yes, you can have a barbecue with, those are typically gas-fired now, but they could be charcoal etc., so there may be something there, but a normal house chimney is not necessary. You used to have to have the chimney go two feet higher than any part of the house within 10 feet. Now, with a gas-fired appliance, that isn't the case, it would be considerably lower. So, there's another one I think we need to coordinate with building.
Jennifer, just a additional comment on the building height. If you really want to achieve that stepping back or stepping down building massing, the best way is to eliminate that average. In other words, here is the existing terrain, you raise it by 25 feet or whatever height limit, that's the top of your envelope you should not encroach, with some exceptions. So, that way, you are, you're going to force the designer to have this terraced building slope. But it also means we're tightening the building height regulation, so that needs to be carefully considered.
And is that something that the Planning Commission consensus-wise would want to pursue, eliminating the averaging?
What's the proposal, eliminating averaging from the average of the topology to the roof height?
Correct, and rather follow the topology, the topography.
And what would be the benefit of that, Commissioner Wu, as opposed to the averaging?
I'm not proposing it, I'm just saying, if the staff wants to achieve the objective to, to encourage the building to step down, to follow the terrain, then that would be an effective way. Because right now, we're letting people to average the building height, so the result would be, they're going to want big, big roof element, so they can take advantage of the averaging. One corner will be higher than, let's assume the building height is 25 feet, so maybe one corner they get a 30, but the other corner they got a 20. So, four corners average, they had a 25. So, the top would be flat, or it's a steel pitch roof in most of the case. But if we were to limit the building height to 25 feet above the terrain without averaging, then people have to terrace the building. So, each part, no part of the building would encroach into that 25 feet above terrain top envelope. That will force people to terrace the building, to step down, to cascade down along the topography. I'm saying that would be an effective way, but I believe it's bigger than, this issue is more, it's bigger than just talking about a definition tonight. It has to come back as a separate item, agendized, because it's overall, it tightens the building height limit regulation.
Jim, what maybe we can do, I think, and this is for Gabriel also, this is something that I think we need to get the expertise of local architects and whatnot to give us input who've worked with this, what we've got currently, and pick their brains. So, I think we almost need a working meeting with either the Orange County Architectural Guild, or invite the local architects in to provide comments and suggestions, because they're, they're the ones who work with it every day and see the difficulties. We know what the end product we want to see, and, but maybe they have seen it in other jurisdictions etc., and can give us some good insight on this particular item.
Yeah, if we want to look at that change, I agree, because probably as a study session, and, you know, bring in those experts and kind of have a, an open discussion with them and get their feelings on it, and be able to present to them, you know, here's our goals. Does the current way we measure it work, or should we do something more, absolutely?
Right, so, we should also look at, looking to other cities and how they practice this. As far as I know, Laguna Beach has this tighter control, and they don't allow the averaging thing. Their, their regulation is much more detailed, much tighter. But San Clemente is a little different, so whether we want to do it or not, it needs to go through a little more expanded public input, and eventually get to the city council to make that decision, I believe. Building height is a sensitive issue in town.
Gabriel, why don't you and I talk about offline, we can talk about a, a potential study session with the architects, and I think, you know, Bart hit the nail on the head, the, what are they again, the Southern California, the Southern Orange County Architects Association?
Architectural Guild.
Architectural Guild of Orange County, so, and I know Michael Luna is a member of that, or at least has been, so we should probably reach out and see if we can't put something together, Gabriel.
Commissioners, I think your input is, is important, and the way this is set up is more of code amendments that are kind of cleanup items, and this seems to be something that's much larger in scope. So, one way to approach this, which might be recommended, is to, yeah, I think it's been mentioned before, maybe this is considered independent, and this doesn't import with the code cleanup items. If it's going to be a little bit more involved, then maybe it needs to be, that might be the right approach here.
Yeah, and personally, I agree, I didn't want to hold up the code amendment change. This would be kind of a whole separate item on a separate track. If anyone feels differently, speak up.
It is a bigger, a much bigger item. I think not only the local designers, but also, more importantly, property owners, the residents, and the public needs to be involved in that decision.
Okay, yeah, so let's, you know, yeah, independent of this, we'll keep, you know, certainly full speed ahead with the zoning ordinance change, and we'll worry about changing the roof, roof height ordinance specifically as a separate item and get their input when time permits, as time permits.
Thank you, commissioners. We have about seven minutes left for this subject area. In, in that regard, is there any particular definition that you would like to take a look at now, and/or are there any other recommended definitions to address as a separate, larger item in the future?
And I think we're going to have to talk about microbreweries and taprooms, so I actually think those are kind of, you know, one's, one item's controversial, the other one's critical in our community, so I think that we should, you know, give them their due and give them a little more time, because those might be more time-consuming items than in the other sections.
Yes. Hey, Jim? Jim, I would like to, hi, thanks. I'd like to comment quickly on just hedges. And Jennifer, I've read the proposed definition of a hedge we're adding. Interesting that we have not had one all this time, but I think it might be worth expanding a little on that. In some jurisdictions, there's some issues when it comes to regulating hedges, and it's even made it to court. When folks feel they need privacy and they want to put in, you know, plant material that is not a, you know, a structured material like a, you know, semi-block or wooden fence, vinyl fencing, etc., they'll simply put plant material in for either visual buffer or sound buffer. That material could range anywhere from, you know, some sort of structured vine to, you know, trees. And our definition is, it's succinct, you know, and I'll read it. Our proposed definition said, "Means generally dense vegetation, so aligning as to form a physical barrier similar in shape and proportion to a wall or fence." And that is an interpretation, really, depending on who is, you know, you know, making that determination, whether it be a neighbor, homeowner who, who, you know, feels that whatever they've done does not qualify as a, as a hedge or a green wall, but maybe something else, maybe they just like the way carrot woods like up the window. So, I would like to know if you'd be open to looking at something a little more expansive, so that, you know, we can really give some strength to, to that component. A hedge is clearly something that is, you know, structured in such a way to create a visual barrier, but it doesn't really, our definition doesn't really say that. And I just want to make sure that we have some protections in place, and I'm going to throw out, you know, an example of how it could read, and, you know, this is not new language for some of us on this call, it's pretty common, but we could do something like this. "A hedge means a dense row of low-branching trees, shrubs, vines, or other plants which encloses land, divides land into distinct portions, separates contiguous properties, obstructs the passage of light and air into adjacent land, or obstructs the vision of motorists or pedestrians on or near public roads." That way, we have some, you know, rationale behind it, because I think it could, it can get sticky if we start to try to regulate plant material. If it's, if, you know, if we're simply using a pruning, you know, a manner of pruning as our criteria to determine whether, you know, a row of plant material with no specific identification of plant material, anything that's, you know, trimmed to look like it's a wall or a fence, suddenly it's a hedge. When somebody could simply plant, you know, a row of evergreen, you know, trees and create a hedge without, you know, the effect of a hedge without making it more of a topiary type of design. So, I think it's worth discussing, and I'd like to know what your thoughts are on that.
Thank you for the suggested language. We are open to suggestions, and we have that written to the record, thank you for that. We have three more minutes in this subject area. Is there another definition that we'd like to discuss?
Yeah, Jennifer, I am going to extend the time that we spend on this particular section, because I think we've got a couple of important things to discuss, so, you know, my apologies, my apologies for overruling you, it's going to be a rare occurrence. But if there's no more discussion on hedges, we can talk about inland canyons.
How, Chair, I'm sorry, could, do you want to specify how many more minutes you'd like to spend on this subject area?
Let's set aside 20 minutes for now, see, see where we are at that time.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jim, I will concur with Michael on those hedges. I mean, how do we handle a row of cypress, which can go to 30 feet? You can pack them in next to each other, and it pretty much creates a wall, end blocks view, etc. And currently, I believe you can put that right up against the property line and let it grow.
Well, this is a, currently the city doesn't have a view protection, so there's no view easement. That has something to do with not just the privacy, because, you know, a row of Italian cypress is going to complete a block, some, some other people's view, but as of now, the city doesn't have, have view protection, what other city called a view equity. And the city had a opportunity in the past to, to work on a tree ordinance, and the city council decided to, not to deal with private trees. So, yes, that's, that's an issue, and it's, it's related to a bigger issue.
This is why we need some teeth on any definition that we have for a hedge, and I say teeth, and I'm sorry, that's probably inappropriate word to use. I mean, we need some justification, justification, we need to give it some, you know, purpose, other than, you know, simply being a green wall, I mean, why are we doing this? We want to, we want to create a mechanism to protect adjacent property owners from, you know, negative impacts, and those would be associated to maybe light or air, obstructing, you know, line of sight for motorists or pedestrians, public right-of-way, you know, in a, in a situation where there'd be a negative impact on an adjacent property owner. That would be about all we could do, but otherwise, we're regulating plant material, and yes, that can be a very slippery slope. We can put it in there, we might get a 30% return on folks who are going to be compliant, but if somebody really wanted to, if somebody really wanted to, you know, make it a discussion, it could really go a long way. It's, and it's not an uncommon, this, this sort of a- It's, it's, and it's not an uncommon, this, this sort of a, um, a, uh, the sort of language is, is consistent throughout many jurisdictions and ordinances. It's, it's often grouped into, you know, walls and fences. Uh, so, but there has to be some differentiation between, you know, plant material and, and hedges that are intended to, to, you know, serve a purpose. And, you know, if that's view obstruction, uh, it's probably privacy. And I think folks have a right to privacy. But if that mechanism is, is designed in such a way that it creates a negative impact on an adjacent homeowner, aside from somebody maybe not wanting to look at, you know, a wall of green leaves, who would prefer to look at a stucco wall? I mean, that's, that's different. But if we are allowing, um, you know, for, for something, we might as well, you know, give it some strength. And I, for, for going to prohibit something, we might as well give our language, our code language some strength, you know, why are we doing it? So.
Any other input to staff on hedges?
Hi, Jim, this is, this is, this is, uh, Kuchinsky. Uh, I'm just curious, hedges is, looks like they're just putting it in because section 17.24.080 or .090 talks about encroachments, right? And, um, they're just adding, adding that definition in there. The, the height, the setback and all that's already in there. That's something that Commissioner, uh, the other commissioners were concerned about. Am, am I reading that incorrectly?
That, that is, that is there. There is discussion about, you know, varying heights and setback areas, front, side, and rear. Uh, and we're talking about a definition, but it's got a, I'm just trying to, all I'm trying to do is draw some attention toward definition and why we have setback regulations for it. And, you know, if somebody's going to see a, a, a rule for hedges, but we have no definition of a hedge, that definition, if we're going to add one, should have some, you know, value to it. There should be some substance there, some strength. Otherwise, you know, imagine, you know, this, uh, you know, a homeowner, you know, wants to put in some plant material, you know, on their property. You want to have a, you know, beautiful yard full of plants and shrubs and trees. And you get a letter from, you know, the city saying, well, you've got to, you know, remove or, you know, need to comply and remove your, your trees because we believe it's a hedge. So it, there should be, you know, there should be some strength to the definition. That's all I'm saying.
So, uh, would changing the word hedges to plant material, um, you know, fix that?
So now we're talking about the, the, you know, the setback encroachment, which is another discussion. I think that if we're going to have definition for hedges in there, we should, you know, give it some strength. But plant material, I guess, I don't know. What, what do the other commissioners think? I, I, I think it's a slippery slope. You start to regulate plant material, you know, and it's.
We might be, we might be going a little in the weeds here. Um, so I'll suggest that I've, we've given actually a lot of, uh, feedback to staff on hedges. So maybe we should let them chew on that and look at some of these, uh, uh, issues and concerns we raised and see what they come up with. Is that acceptable to the commissioners?
That's good. It would be great. And if we have legal on the call, I know our, our legal representation is, well, has got to be well-versed in this area and represents other jurisdictions as well. It would be interesting to get some feedback, uh, in this forum so that we can all hear, you know, what sort of issues have come up in the past, uh, you know, and what, you know, definitions are, are most successful and how that's regulated. So maybe something in the future we can talk about.
Okay. Um, so if that's it on hedges, let's move on to inland canyons.
Um, Jim, why did we skip cultural facilities?
Oh, I'm sorry, um.
I think Jennifer had mentioned that she kind of excluded that for some reason.
Uh, yeah, because she was, she wanted to cover that other stuff. So I'm sorry, Jennifer, I'll let you pick the next item we discuss here.
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to push this within the time. But cultural facilities, um, is added in here because it is referenced as a permitted use in the code, but we don't have any, uh, definition. So what staff did is they, uh, explored the definitions for cultural facilities in other jurisdictions and came up with the proposed language that you have before you tonight.
Where is that used in the code? I mean, um, this could include churches. It could include judo, um, gyms that teach a little of the philosophy of, uh, of, um, judo, et cetera. I mean, it's a pretty wide, um, spectrum of things. And where do we limit cultural facilities? I guess I'm.
I think what staff got here is very reasonable. If you, you know, it's got a reasonable definition, we don't need to cover the wart on, on anything like that.
Well, I, I do think Bart brings up a good point in terms of, you know, where do we use this definition? And if we use it, if, if it can cover all these other sort of unexpected things, if we use it in a lot of places or for something in particular, are we, are we buying ourselves a problem? I, uh, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know where else it's used.
This is Jennifer. It is used as, um, a use within the use table for public zones. And specifically, it is allowed with a use permit. And for the, um, proposed definition, the intent was not to allow, uh, classes per se, but specifically, um, the production or presentation or display, uh, of cultural items.
Jennifer, uh, I, I'd like to add a library to it. Um, I, I'm not sure. I, I think I, uh, we should add a library to it regarding historic architecture. I'd say it depends on the use inside, not, not, not on the, the, um, the status of being a historic structure in itself. In other words, if a building is a historic structure, uh, it does not make it a cultural facility just because of that. It has to be the use inside. So I, I, I mostly agree with your definition, um, with two things. First is the library. The second is on botanical gardens. Um, it's probably okay, but, um, you know, what if other, other people are asking about a nursery and horticulture things? Um, there, there, there must be a line to draw.
You know, I think I see where staff is going with this. Maybe it just needs to be tightened up a bit. But I, if I understand, Jennifer, you might be saying here that this might, a cultural facility might be a place where you regularly, uh, exhibit paintings. But it wouldn't be a place whose purpose was to teach people how to paint, for example. Do I have, do I have that correct?
Correct, or sell art.
Sell art would be included in this?
Would not, just for the display.
Just for the display, okay. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't cover a dance studio, but it would cover a dance, you know, someplace with a stage where you might have dancers. The, my only concern is what if you have a dance studio that's doing a dance, but that wouldn't, I guess that wouldn't be the primary use of it. Um, so it wouldn't be a cultural facility. So I, I, I see where you're going, I think, but I, maybe we need to, it, I had, I had to scratch my head a little bit, so maybe we can tighten it up a little bit to, to say it's, it's for exhibits and performance. I think you've got that in here, but, um, maybe we need to say, I don't know. I, I don't want to wordsmith for you, so.
Thank you.
Anything else, um, from commissioners on cultural facilities? Okay. What's next, Jennifer?
Thank you. So, um, I think I heard someone want to talk about inland canyon.
Well, I, the canyon, the, um, canyon edge paragraph, the more I read it, it kind of gets confusing to me. I, I guess maybe everybody ought to read it, but I'm not sure. I captured, the more I read it, the more I'm trying to visualize what I'm trying to say here. As far as upper termination, cases where the top edge is rounded away from the face of the canyon results in erosional processes. Related to the present of the canyon face, the canyon edge shall be defined as that point nearest the canyon beyond which the downward gradient of the land surface increases more or less continuously until it reaches the general gradient of the canyon. In case where there is step by feature at the top of canyon face, the landward edge of its topmost rise shall be taken to be canyon edge.
Yes, it is, um.
But the earlier part of it, you want to read it, I'm trying to get some clarity in it, but I don't. I mean, it's a difficult thing to try to, try to define because nature creates these gradients in so many different ways. But I found that the early part of it was kind of confusing. The more I read it, the more I didn't understand it. I deferred to other commissioners.
So it is quite confusing, um, or I shouldn't say confusing, but technical. Uh, and these definitions mirror those definitions for canyons in the coastal zone, uh, specifically to provide that consistency between the coastal and the inland zones. Uh, we do have provisions for inland canyons, but don't have them defined. And we would use the, this technical definition to define an inland canyon. What's not included in your proposal tonight, which we can add, is actually a figure to make that technical definition a bit easier to understand.
That's probably, sorry, go ahead, Bart, I'm done.
No, I agree with that, that, you know, like some sort of a gradual presentation with that. We had several issues like this several years ago up on Santiago and some of the others that were inland canyons. I think Chris Wright, I think he was here and I was part of the planner on that. We, where we had no definition, but we were looking, we basically defined some of the edges. Uh, we tried to conform and make it similar to what was in the coastal zone, the string line and all that, as I recall, maybe a little hazy ground right here, but actually tried, as I remember, some conformity to the edge of the canyon and inland things. It's still the way it was defined for, similar, based by the coastal. I don't know if anybody remembers that. We had several, did you listen to developments up in these inland canyons some time ago?
And there is a five-minute warning, Commissioner.
Okay. Um, for canyon edge, do, do we have the same definition of canyon edge for both inland and coastal canyons? Or are there def, different definitions?
Uh, we do not have any definitions for inland canyons. This would add them. And these mirror those, these mirror those definitions for coastal.
Oh, very good. So that we have the same definition of a canyon edge between inland and coastal?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Fair enough here, just things all the guys on the, you know, land, coastal land use thing, the coastal commission.
Correct.
Okay. That's the case, I'll back off on it and reread it so I understand it.
If we already have, um, definition for canyon or, and coastal canyon, then inland canyon doesn't really need a definition. You can just say any canyon that's not a coastal canyon is an inland canyon and that's all.
To clarify, uh, we have a definition for coastal canyon, but no definition for inland canyon or canyon.
Any other comments on the inland canyon definition?
No, I think that, that's kind of what, I think probably the same as what we have in the coastal. It's in a non-coastal area. Uncomfortable with that, it's just the canyon edge paragraph. I wanted to have some hard time with it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, three minutes left.
Well, let's, let's give us till the top of the hour, um, to continue on this section because I think there's going to be some discussion with, um, microbreweries and taprooms, um, given our history. Uh, so, uh, I think it's important to kind of, uh, uh, wrap that up so we can put a bow on this section. Um, is that the, did you have something you wanted to talk about before that item, Jennifer? Or would you want to go to the de, the definitions you have under restaurants?
Uh, I would suggest, uh, talking about taprooms with our remaining time. Thank you.
All right, very good. Um, then, uh, do you want to give us, uh, like a very brief, uh, motivation for this? Like you have with the other ones?
Absolutely, thank you. Uh, so this definition and the associated definitions would be added to the code to address an interpretation, um, from the planning commission for microbreweries and from the city planner in regards to taproom. And this definition would mirror the recommendations as far as staff understood them in both of those interpretations. And we do have the city planner, uh, on the phone call or at the meeting tonight to help facilitate the, the discussion if you have any questions.
Commissioners, this is, uh, Gabriel for the city planner. So some background on this, you know, I know, uh, we've talked about the interpretation for the taprooms in the past, the standalone taprooms. And, uh, so what we did present here, um, were ways that this could be integrated to the code if the planning commission, um, or based on the interpretation, right? So our interpretations should actually be included in the code, but there is an opportunity for the planning commission, um, to modify, um, how that would reflect in the code or, um, you know, potentially it's, it's not included. Uh, and so there's definitely a lot of opportunity for discussion since I was part of that interpretation. Uh, you know, I'm happy to, to help provide those options that are available to the planning commission.
Does anyone want to start off the conversation?
I, I jump in.
Okay.
Oh, Bart, go ahead.
Yeah, um, we're here trying to make land use decisions. And it seems like we're not making a land use decision here. We're making a decision to, um, implement something that I think was, uh, not thought through when it was first approved. Um, so we're trying to fix the situation we're in. And I'd like to know, one, how this is different than a wine tasting room? Uh, other than one's beer, one's wine. So why does there need to be a separate, um, section? Um, and is this a land use that we feel is appropriate? Um, for our MU3 and MU1 zones, which are going to have residential elements, could be next to, um, uh, hotel and apartment projects? And, um, uh, I have no idea why allowing customers to carry in food for onsite consumption is even mentioned in here. Um, because if they do that, then they're going to, as far as I'm concerned, they have to provide parking just as if it was a, they made it onsite. So, uh, I'd like to hear somebody say that, yeah, I think we need this kind of land use in these zones. And then, uh, if you can convince me of that, then we can, I'll make the next step. But I'm not sure this is a land use that's necessary in these zones.
I, I kind of agree with you, Bart. I, I think you kind of hit the nail on the head. It's always the thing that I've struggled with this is what is the, what's the unique land use that we have to manage this and.
Hey, Jim, we can hear your music.
It's not my music, I don't think. I'm hearing it too.
Excellent, tasty, beautiful music.
I don't know what that was, so anyway, sorry. Um, yeah, we also seem to be treating a taproom more like a restaurant, which, uh, you know, I know they're only serving beer, but I know plenty of people who sit around and enjoy a few hours of, uh, of beer. So, um, uh, I, I don't really understand that either, it seems to be, I think as Bart was saying, kind of like, um, at best a distinction without a difference, or maybe trying to shoehorn a use in where it might not be ideal, I mean, a restaurant, you know? So anyway, go ahead, Mike.
No, I, I'm with you. There's a lot to say here. Um, so what's happened is we, we have, and this may be a matter of ease of, of, you know, business, uh, you know, starting a business, but what we see with the microbreweries, you know, um, tasting rooms, you know, fill in the blank, whatever it is, whether it be beer or hard spirits, um, there is, there's a light manufacturing component to these. And that's why, you know, it seems natural to have them up in the industrial zones and lighter industrial zones. You know, we've got a number of, of them here in town. But what's happened is, um, is that they've turned into more of a, into something different, really. You know, we get the food trucks that are parked out on a, you know, regular basis out in front, you know, folks bringing food in, whatever it is, there's a food component. And so it, it makes sense to, to look at these the way we look at anything else. Um, you know, there are a number of uses in town where food and, and spirits are served. There may be an off-site location where, uh, you know, my, microbrew, um, happens, but not onsite. That's more of the retail side and going to get a sandwich and a beer that was made locally, that's great. It's in a commercial zone, which is characteristic, uh, you know, it's a use characteristic in that zone. But to Bart's point, you know, we start, you know, bringing these in closer to more sensitive uses, um, or inappropriate uses that you wouldn't, you know, put a bar in or, or a restaurant grill, uh, you know, the bar and grill sort of thing. Yeah, it kind of begs the question, you know, what's so different about it really? I mean, the, the, it may look a little different, but, you know, the end result, you know, the function, the use itself really is about the same. You know, how the food is shaped and how it's delivered in or, you know, piped in, whatever it is, it's still functioning the same way. And it should be regulated, you know, like other uses, you know? I don't, to your point, Jim, I mean, to, to parse out these, these uses, um, this way, it, it gets to be complicated and, and I think it's confusing too. I mean, maybe for the operators, again, maybe an easier way to get up and running, um, and offer some light care for, for folks who are coming in to taste the product. And it does, in that sense, have a different look to it or characteristic, but at the end of the day, it's, it's food and drinks, right? And so having a definition, we call it taproom, somebody else calls it a brew pub, you know, a microbrew, I mean, there's so many different, if we can put all of these in the same, sort of in the same bucket with some exceptions here and there for things, uh, different, you know, different characteristics, it may be atypical, then we address it then, but we have it in, in a category that we can easily reference. And then we, then we adjust accordingly from there, rather than have these completely separate islands of, of uses and people looking at each other, you know, why, why do I got to go way over here to get language for that, you know, that regulation? Why am I looking in this different section of the code? Shouldn't it be here under, under the rest of them? So I agree, this, this might be a longer discussion than we have tonight. I think it's worthwhile, like to Bart's point, I think some decisions may not have been the wrong decisions, but were decisions that were made in an effort to facilitate folks that wanted to do business in town. And as we often have done, uh, we find a way to accommodate folks that want to do business in town. And many of them have been great operators, and it's turned out well, they've found great success. But it begs the question, you know, when we're talking about land use, you know, we should probably be, you know, adjusting this so we can have a better conversation in the future. And if it means an amendment, maybe some folks got in under the wire, under a different code, um, but that's what we're doing, you know, that's the point of this, right? To make it work better for everybody.
So let me, um, I'll just put out, uh, maybe some, a recommendation or some potential guidance for staff to chew on and people, you know, other commissioners can agree or disagree, um, to see if we can maybe move forward with it. I, I'm looking at this and I, the original interpretation by the planning commission, whenever that was, eight years ago or so, um, was that a, a microbrewery that just serves beer should be interpreted as a bar, and it should be, because it has a light industrial use there, you know, it, it, it could be in a commercial zone, but it needs a conditional use permit to make sure that we can properly condition it where that light industrial, that that small industrial use is going to be appropriate. I would say as far as taprooms are concerned, um, those are also bars, they are, they're just bars, and we should treat them like, like that. Um, if you don't have food, then, you know, you're not a restaurant. Um, I, I think that would be roughly the same as a, as a, as a wine tasting room. Um, and again, probably just in commercial zones and, and not mixed use zones because you've got neighbor, potentially neighborhoods there and mixed use zones that might be more negatively impacted. So, microbreweries, yeah, I, I would say just throw out the taproom definition, keep microbreweries as something that requires a conditional use permit, you know, small batch microbreweries, it, that has a conditional use permit in, they're a commercial zones, and we could actually have a definition of taproom, let's say it's a bar, or modify the definition of a bar to say this includes a, you know, a taproom, any facility that is only serving, it doesn't cook any food, it doesn't prepare any food, and it only serves alcohol of whatever kind. So I'll just throw, put that out there and see what people think.
I guess I could probably get my hands around it, Tim. A microbrewery, uh, I, I look at this particular definition, we get the food going down Los Molinos, it does have an industrial wedge to it, part of, part of the business is making it there. Uh, and so I'm comfortable with microbrewery. The taproom basically is, is just defining the artifacts annex, so to speak, that is underneath the, that we had a big brew hall over on some definitions here, and it's, uh, and what it says here, another thing is it's under the ownership of a food, a microbrewery operating in, in San Clemente. And then E is the only standalone beer tasting room committed for the microbrewery in item. In other words, I think artifacts actually have a tasting room at their main place. They just wanted an annex downtown. So E is very restricted compared to most the other little breweries alone. It's like I tend to agree with Jim that, uh, you know, more is Los Molinos beer company, more is artifacts if you want to look at it from a region's activity. And the taproom one, uh, whether you bring your food in or bring it on site, that describes their business plan. Do we need a definition for that? I guess.
Uh, yeah, except to say maybe that, you know, in the definition of bars, we could, we could describe a taproom or if the, in the definition of taproom, say it's a bar. But, and I, yeah, and I, yeah, I guess, I can't remember if I said it or not, but microbreweries, because of their industrial nature, we may not want in mixed use areas at all, you know, can make them conditional in commercial areas, but not mixed use areas at all, but.
Okay. Jim, if I may interject, just keep in mind the granddaddy of them all, at least here in SoCal. Okay? And that's BJ's, um, uh, was it Pizza?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they, they did have, when they first came out into market, they did have a, a small berry, you know, bornade, it was more, I don't know, they were doing some microbrewery, brewing onsite. And their primary function was, was food, but there, it was in the name, you know, BJ's, uh, does anybody recall the official name of that? But you all know who I'm talking about, right?
Yeah.
So, but that's what they did.
It's, it's a good point. I mean, one thing we didn't talk about here was what if it's a microbrewery that's serving food? Now it looks more like a restaurant, how should we treat that? And, you know, if they do actually prepare food, you know, serving sandwiches, I don't think is preparing food. It's like you don't have a kitchen, you know, you don't cook something.
Right.
So, and, and there, and we do have definitions for that, to make that distinction. Uh, but maybe, you know, maybe you want, we want to restrict or allow based on also whether they use food. My biggest concern in that case is just the, the fact they're doing a small industrial stuff and should be conditioned to make sure that it doesn't interfere with the neighborhood since it's a, you know, since that part's not, um, an obvious compatible use.
Well, I, I think, um, we're pretty much on the same page. Um, in my viewpoint, um, microbrewery, brewery, taproom, um, they're all bar. And by the way, we don't have a definition for pub. We mentioned a pub somewhere, we don't have a definition for it. If we want to expand the definition of bar, we can do a subdefinition underneath the bar, but I don't think they're necessary. ABC alcoholic beverage control has a, a clear definition between, a distinction between restaurants and bars. A bar is primary for the sale of alcoholic beverage. Restaurants, on the other hand, is for serving meal. Restaurant may have a, a alcoholic license, it may have a bar or not. A bar may serve food or not, but, um, they have the defining characters if they're, whether they're selling meals or, or alcoholic beverage as their primary source of revenue. Um, bar has, um, bar is quite different from a restaurant because in order to, to go to a bar, people need to be 21 years and older. I cannot bring my child to a bar, I can go to a restaurant. So they do serve the public, but they serve a, a smaller subset of the public, and I think they're different land use. Uh, I, I, I'm, I'm, I do not agree that we put a bar underneath a restaurant, they are different. And a bar is associated with quite a few negative, uh, impact to the neighborhood, to name a few, noise, parking, security, uh, concerns, now people have fight there. Um, all these things make the bar a little more, less desired than restaurants. Do we really want to put the bar underneath the definition, underneath the umbrella of a restaurant to allow them to enjoy the benefits and incentive that the city designed to encourage restaurant, uh, you know, most, most importantly, the parking waivers? Um, I'm not for encouraging alcoholic consumption in the city. And I think if a restaurant had a bar, and that, that's, that's, that's fine to, for them to have that outdoor seating waiver for the parking, but if there's a bar and they don't serve any food, um, the, you know, what the reason to, to let them to have the parking waiver? And that because the result will be, there will be more of them, and they're going to create some negative impact to the neighborhood. So that's something we need to carefully think about. And also in this definition, we try to put some development standards in this definition. I, I believe they should belong, they, they should go to, um, the, the development standard underneath, uh, the respective zones, not in the, in the definition. Um, otherwise people go to, could go to each zone and look up development standards, and then later on they find that that's not all, because something in the definition also governs, that, that's not very, uh, clear and friendly to people. So I'd, I'd recommend that if we are changing any development standards, we address them in development standards underneath the zone, land use zones, not in definition. And, and the fact, if we were to put a bar underneath the, um, the restaurant definition, we're effectively changing the development stands and standards, and that needs to be, um, needs to be notified to the public, that's a bigger, bigger issue than changing a definition. Changing a definition is a sneaky way to, to, to make, to effectively change that development standards. I think we need a, a, you know, open public discourse on that if we want to, um, allow, uh, if we want to make a bar part of the restaurant definition.
So, um, we are, we've got about 15 minutes left. Um, if, uh, the commissioners feel like we've provided staff sufficient input here, and if staff doesn't have any questions for us, um, then we could move on from this item.
But taproom under the definition of a bar, and then we move on.
So Jennifer, you, do you have, uh, you probably do have enough from us on this, uh, item right now?
We do, thank you. We will make it a separate item and bring it back at a later date.
Very good, thank you. All right, um, Jennifer, it's up to you, uh, if there's anything else you wanted to cover in this section, or if you'd like to go to the next section.
Chairman Rowland, I was, I was going to ask if, if you could, um, some of the planning commissioners can weigh on at least one thing. That has to do with what Commissioner Wu brought up. Uh, the reason why bars and cocktail lounge, uh, is under restaurants in, in this code amendment is that, one, bar and cocktail lounge isn't defined in the code, and then, two, in the planning commission interpretation for microbreweries in 2000, the 2012, um, in that interpretation, uh, it identified a bar and a cocktail lounge as a subset of a restaurant. Uh, and it made it through that interpretation, and so, uh, you know, the planning commission doesn't feel that a bar or a cocktail lounge would be under a restaurant. Uh, and then, you know, I would, I would be interested to know if, if there's other planning commissioners that, uh, you know, think so as well. Because I think that changes a lot of what we'll present to the planning commission in a public hearing.
Okay. Well, I, if I may, I, you know, bars and cocktail lounges, okay, this is, and don't hit me with a stick when I say this, these, these are terms that have been grandfathered in. You know, microbreweries, taprooms, all that didn't exist, you know? So when language was created and standardized, it was used across the board. Everybody, everybody used the same sort of, um, terms to identify a particular behavior and land, land use. So a lounge and a bar, it basically places to drink alcohol, okay? And so this definitely warrants more discussion, but I think, you know, we have an opportunity to bring our language up to date, to modernize, to just make it current to today's, you know, living. Restaurants don't really build the same way they used to, you know? Some of the older restaurants, you walk in, there's a little separate lounge off to the side, you go over there, and now everything's kind of out in the open, and, you know, they may have a, a, you know, a, a bar, if you will, like a physical bar, but it's right there, you know, right, the tables are nearby, it's just kind of, so. I guess what I, what I'm saying is, Gabriel, my, my thoughts on that are, you know, that there definitely needs to be more discussion here, certainly more than, you know, we have time for tonight. But I think it's an opportunity to true it up, just like we can with parking, that's another big one that we can talk about. So just to make our, our code language more current, you know, and applicable to how we live now, how people use space.
So, Mike, if I understand what you're saying, like a definition of a restaurant would have to include the fact that it serves alcohol, and the definition of a bar would have to say it doesn't include food, something, as opposed to like a parent-child type of relationship between the two? Do I have that right?
Yeah, I think, you know, it would, we're going to need to do some research and know where we draw the line, so how we scale. So, you know, at some point on that sliding scale, it's chefs, you know, there's, it's more of a restaurant with a, you know, that serves alcohol, they have, you know, they've got their ABC license and they're serving beer and wine or maybe hard spirits, uh, versus, you know, it's, it's kind of primary versus ancillary in uses. So if you, you know, we've got a number of establishments in town, you walk in, you know you're in a bar. First thing you see is a gigantic bar, some pool tables and some taps, and you know you're in a bar. They may sell, you know, some, you know, sliders or whatever off the side, but that's, those are ancillary to the primary, the primary being the bar. So that, you know, that would be under the definition of, however we draft this, so we wordsmith all this, and so everything kind of falls, if it, on that scale, you know, something that's easy for a city planner to say, that's definitely a, a bar by our criteria, you know, you're a bar with a food component, um, versus you are a restaurant. It's, you know, you open, open seating, you've got a hostess or hosted that'll invite you in with the family, sit down, um, and you can also have a beer if you like with your meal. We happen to have, you know, the restaurant has maybe some taps, maybe, you know, it does have a little bar off the side, but it's clearly not, you know, primary to the, to the, you know, it's not a primary component to the use, more ancillary. the, you know, it's not a primary component to the use more ancillary.
So, so to address Gabriel's question, um, it sounds like what I'm hearing, and people can correct me, is there are, we, we'd like, you'd like to see maybe something that has has definitions for a restaurant as separate from bars, separate from et cetera, that says essentially in a restaurant, the primary thing is food. They might do alcohol too. And in a bar, the primary thing is alcohol. Maybe they do a little food too, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, kind of enumerate the things like that. Does that sound like the, the kind of guidance we want to give to staff?
Well, I'm all for it, yeah.
That's the ABC now.
Okay, Gabriel, do you have what you need then? Did, did, did that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, over to you, Jennifer.
Thank you. And for the remaining time that we have until seven o'clock, um, I'd like to reintroduce Christopher Wright to discuss the non-conforming provision.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Good evening. Christopher Wright, associate planner two. Uh, my, uh, subject area relates to non-conforming structures and uses, clarifying six items that are on page 28 of your, 28, attachment six of your report. Uh, the first, I'm going to go through them one by one because they're, they're items in which you may have questions and I think it will aid the discussion to go through one by one. So first, it, there's an item to clarify the 50% rule for detached garages and garage expansions. Uh, as a reminder, the 50% rule is how additions and alterations are measured for non-conforming structures, the cutoff point in which a structure must be made conforming. For additions, currently, an addition is based upon the gross floor area of a structure and gross floor area is to the outer limit of that building. So if you have a garage that's attached, the garage is currently counted in the size of the structure in which you can expand less than 50%. So if you have a garage that's attached, you potentially could expand more area than if you have a detached garage. In the planning commission, we had a, an interpretation in which some direction was given to make changes so that the 50% rule is primarily based upon the living area of the home, but that there would also be some provisions for garage additions that comply with the code, uh, with the focus on making it where garages are treated the same, whether they be attached or detached. So several changes are proposed. Uh, first, there are some strike through edits to remove distinguished, uh, standards for detached and attached. The, the size of a dwelling would be based upon living area. For accessory buildings like garages, it would be based on the, the interior area of the building to the outermost walls of that garage or the, the accessory structure. And then for any non-residential building, it would be based upon gross floor area like it is today. Uh, that, that concludes my overview of that. The, it's really the first two items, um, are related to the, that discussion. Are there any questions?
No, it makes sense to me.
Nope, seeing none, I'll keep going.
Chris, 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 okay, you're going to keep going. You're going to get deeper into the non-conforming accessory piece. You're just working through, I think I lost you. Did you say you were just on page 28?
I'm on page, I'm sorry.
I lost you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I, I can hear you. I apologize, but I, I'm not clear on what you just addressed. You're just addressing page 28?
28 and 29, they're the first two items, subject area.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to try to go through the items as we go, so if you have any comments or questions, I, I would welcome them now so we can try to get through them. We can always come back if you have more questions.
Okay.
Okay. So on page 29, the third item is related to parking required for multifamily expansions. There were some city council comments over time raising a question of whether the city should allow additions to multifamily residential structures that have non-conforming parking, um, without them bringing parking into compliance with parking standards. So even if it's less than a 50% addition, and staff does not recommend changes for this item because of concerns that it would be an obstacle to improving housing and with some housing units being occupied by more than one family and providing options for people varying incomes, uh, staff does not recommend changes. Are there any concerns with this item?
Nope, doesn't sound like it.
Okay. The fourth item is an exemption for residences with single car garages or carports prior to April 4th, 1962. Our zoning ordinance, non-conforming chapter exempts residences with a single car garage or carport built prior to April 4th, 1962. It does not speak to what, whether that exemption applies, it's similar to completely tear the house down. So, uh, staff's understanding is the intent is not to maintain that exemption as someone is making significant changes to a house. So we are proposing changes that would say if you are removing portions of the structural frame of that house and the changes are a hundred percent or more of the replacement value of the house, then that exemption would no longer apply. Any questions?
Yeah, this, this gets into a question that I had because I saw in a few places, we seem to be, at, at least to my eyes, this is, is kind of a new thing. We've usually done like 50% square footage or something like that. We're now saying for some of these items that that, that bar is the replacement cost, 50% or a hundred percent replacement cost. How do you calculate that?
Yes, so I, on, uh, first I, I do want to note that the idea of replacement cost as a threshold for applying non-conforming rules actually exists when it comes to accident damage for non-conforming uses. And so we are taking that same idea and text and just applying it for some unique circumstances in which it can be difficult to, in staff's opinion, to cover different circumstances that could come up for people and, and more complexity in how you may measure something. Um, and I'll, and that will make sense when I get to the next item, but it, why don't we turn to, uh, let's see here, just a second.
Hey, hey, Jim, I, um, I'd like to comment on, on your comment as well and Chris, while you're looking at that section. I, um, I think that's, Jim's comment is valid because if, if y'all recall our discussion on pole signs, um, we had a lot of, of discussion on, you know, at what point does a, a legally non-conforming, uh, sign need to come down? And those that are in, those that made it under the wire, they're in, they're going to stay, uh, you know, and will they ever come down? And so, and Chris was part of the team at that time and we did have lots of discussion on how we determine, you know, what is, um, you know, uh, at what degree of, of change, at what point do we say, well, no, that's, that's too much and, you know, it's, you're going to have to meet the current, uh, you know, uh, development standards, uh, and as such you can't have it. Basically have to take it down and it's, and that was 50%. And that was on a physical component. So any structural reinforcement work that needed to be done, you know, anything that was considered to be 50%, even that was scary to me because that becomes an interpretation because, you know, with all due respect to you, to Gabriel, our city planner, it was, it was really, the determination was made, um, outside of the, of, um, you know, of the public arena, if you will, not that, you know, what we do at city hall outside of what planning commission does is not within the public, you know, purview, but it's a different character. So there's no plant, there's no, you know, uh, public hearing, there's no noticing that goes out and folks just pretty much don't know what's happening unless they're paying attention, which they have a right to do. So that threshold is 50%. So, and, and now to your point, Jim, you know, when we're, in, in, maybe the section Chris is looking for, um, and it's in the packet, it talks about, you know, city planner has discretion, they're full discretion over that and that's great, we trust in our, in our city, you know, planning department, um, but it's really a matter of, well, the developer comes in and says, well, my replacement cost is less than 50%. And the city planner says, okay, uh, says who? Well, my knowledge says differently, so we're going to go to a third party and that is also defined in the packet here, that that is at the discretion of our city planner to call for a third party evaluation on the actual replacement cost. But what if that replacement cost is still less than 50%, yet the physical change is more than 50%? And we've lost that. So I'm just, I'm just kind of throwing this out there, it's very rough and crude and I apologize, but in terms of continuity in our language throughout when it comes to non-conforming structures, whether it be, you know, in the residential, commercial, industrial zone, it should, there should be consistency there. And I am, you know, I am also concerned with just hanging on replacement value, though Chris is, you know, he's right. It comes down to, you know, if something is insured, you know, what's that, you know, how is that replacement cost determined, you know, is it? So, but for us, it's a land use. We're talking about setbacks, height, you know, the appearance of something, aesthetics, that's what we're talking about. The cost of it is a little different animal, uh, for us that are talking about land use. So it's an important piece of it. It's a little different than what we're used to because we're dealing with the size of a structure, all of them. And so if you can take away 50% of it or you have to add 50% more to it, that's when we're more, most interested. What that cost is, it may vary. You may get a contractor that's licensed that says, hey, I'm going to do it for, I'm going to do it for free, this is my first project and I'm just going to do it as a loss leader and I'm going to do it for nothing. And suddenly your average is skewed, right? So that's what I have to say to that. And Chris tried to interrupt, but I just wanted to add that in because I think it's important and Jim's point to me is valid.
Okay, thank you. And so on page 51, there are requirements that exist today for non-conforming uses when there's an accident and at what point does a non-conforming use, like a duplex in a single-family residential neighborhood have to be brought into compliance? And, uh, there are provisions already for replacement costs that would be the property owner's responsibility to provide a written analysis that would be done by professional, uh, and experienced and qualified construction cost estimator. And, uh, it says, according to existing construction cost estimating indices to the approval of city planner, and then it would be a city planner determination with the option to do a third party review if necessary at the applicant's cost. The idea, this language came about through consulting with our building official at the time with the idea that this is how we assess fees for building permits. And so I was, when this text is put together at the time, we, our prior non-conforming ordinance also had the idea of replacement costs and changes were made in 2008 to improve the language with consultation with building staff. And the idea is we calculate fees based upon replacement costs and the building official routinely reviews what the valuation is according to indices and using that same idea to, to apply non-conforming regulations when it can be more, I, I, I think tricky to deal with a particular situation. So what do I mean by that? Well, uh, accident damage for a, a structure can mean changes to the roof, it can mean damage to the walls, it can mean damage to the foundation, uh, and so it can be all encompassing. And so that's why it, it, I think, in the case of accident damage, it was used. Well, why staff is proposing it now is because for a garage, um, a single-family residence with a single car garage, a lot of these garages are in the back of the property. And previously this issue has come up before and whether we should not exempt these buildings, at what point should we not do it? And there was public concern about, about the complexity of adding a parking space if a garage is in the back of the property. And so there was extra emphasis put into this idea staff had of, of using replacement costs, setting it a hundred percent. So you have to like, you're doing a hundred percent, uh, value type of project of the house, that that would be the point in which you would have to add a parking space or change the parking. So if replacement cost is not desired for the situation, then, uh, I have another idea, but with that explanation, can I get some further discussion and guidance on this?
Chris, I would just say it's all about intensification and degrees thereof, right? So, you know, replacement cost, it's important and it should be factored in, especially when it comes to fees. Okay, maybe that's, that's a useful piece of it. I just, I'm thinking about intensification. If we're, if we're intensifying something, um, you know, I'm just hung up on anything that was legally non-conforming that experiences some sort of expansion. But, you know, we're, we're weighing that against how much it's going to cost to do it. Ah, you know, having knowledge of construction cost, I mean, we have standards, right? But, uh, again, you know, I, I know a couple GCs that are new, they're new at it and they're doing work free, basically. I mean, maybe they get materials for half as much and, you know, maybe they're willing to do it, you know, at a reduced labor cost. I mean, so we start to, that's a slippery slope. It really is because if, if a contractor comes in or a developer comes in and says, well, I, I want to do X, Y, Z and this is our valuation and the city looks in their, you know, their standards book and sees that, you know, they're looking at all the lines and they come up with a different number, I think that's an argument, you know? You know, maybe the developer says, well, you can't tell me what I get, you know, these air conditioners for and I get them for pennies on the dollar. My brother owns a, a manufacturing plant and I get them for cost. You know, I'm not paying $4,000 a unit, I'm paying, you know, $400 a unit, you know? And suddenly it becomes an argument, but meanwhile, you know, they're putting in 10,000 air conditioning units on a rooftop and increasing the height of that building by four feet. And, I mean, this is a horrible example, I apologize, but my point is, you know, if we're intensifying use, um, you know, for those of us here, we're looking at the spatial, we're looking at the, the envelope, you know, how much bigger is it going to be, you know, does it meet, do we, pole signs, for example, do we allow them anymore? No, we don't. If they're next to the freeway, you can't put one in. But if you're going to add to it, we're, are we going to use, you know, the value of the addition to determine whether or not there's been a, um, you know, that threshold has been breached and then suddenly it's, you know, it triggers a, you know, you know, something that requires it to meet the development standards that are current because of the value that the developer says it has or even a third party says it has, regardless of what the intensification looks like physically? So you guys, you, I'm sorry, Chris.
Can I just say that the code changes that are proposed are on page 40 so we can actually see what's proposed?
Our, our goal here, step back for a moment, as where people are swip, are flipping to that. Our goal here ultimately is to take something that is, at, at some point, take something that's significantly out of conformance and bring it into conformance, right? You got some place that was built sixty, seventy years ago, got a little one-car garage or something back there, and at some point, they've gotta get sufficient parking. They've been grandfathered in for, well, since my grandfather's day, right? And at some point, the goal is to bring them into compliance. We're not trying to like push them off the cliff or anything, but at some point, come into compliance. You're talking about homes here that are at least sixty years old, and we're doing kinda, it sounds to me like, and people can correct my thinking, we're kind of doing these flips and twists to get an estimate of what it will cost, so that, and based on that estimate, if it's over or under a certain amount, they've got to bring the garage into conformance or not. A garage has been out of conformance for many decades. So, and, and people are gonna play with those numbers, right? They're gonna get the right contractor, the contractor's gonna like, you know, do an estimate, and of course, there'll be big cost overruns to get to the actual cost, but that low initial estimate will get them to the number they need. And I'm just wondering if we're, if we're trying to do too much here at this point. This is specifically for houses built before nineteen sixty-two. So at some point, can we, okay, why can't at this point, we pick some very subjective, excuse me, very objective, simple measure, you know, maybe it's a pretty low bar, you do any change, you do a ten percent change, you know, you do a change that requires a permit of more than three hundred dollars. Some objective measurement like that and say, oh, okay, now you have to bring that into conformance at sixty, seventy years old. So that's kind of my question is, is, we seem to be doing a lot of work here and, and kind of having the door wide open to people, you know, kind of jiggering the system to avoid coming into conformance. Why don't we just make it so that people need to come into conformance at this point? And kind of make a very simple rule with a fairly low bar if we want?
Well, if, if that's, uh, what the commission's position is, then I would suggest for this situation to say that the existing rules for, uh, removal of an exterior frame or al, major alterations to the frame would apply here, but I think we need to, we need to decide what the, the percent threshold should be. Should it be a fifty percent threshold like any other non-conforming structure? Cause right now, i- it's exempt from those rules. And so staff was leaning towards being more generous for these older homes? And does that, does that mean we're okay with, uh, say, say we're to change this text and say unless a project, uh, removes portions of the dwelling structural, removes or, um, involves major alterations of the dwelling structural frame according to the other rules that, in the chapter, that, that are fif, a hundred percent or a hu, a, a hundred percent? You know, what, what's that percentage that the commission supports?
Well, if I may make another, another comment, if we're going to, to, Chris, if we're going to do this, is it too much that we just have continuity across the board? I realize we're talking about a specific, um, you know, type of use here, but I'm just looking for, for continuity throughout our code when we're talking about non-conforming uses. And if, if there is, so fifty percent is the number that, it's been, we've been talking about that number since I've been around and, and maybe others that have been around longer than I, including Chris and, well, Bart, uh, Jim, and, uh, and Don, you know, fifty percent seems to be the number. And if we can do sort of a, maybe a survey, I've seen it in other jurisdictions as well, maybe we just pick that number. And exceptions are part of the process, it's part of our function as a group here, and we look at exceptions. So if, if we're talking about, you know, one use versus another, if you have a residential use that is doing some sort of expansion, um, you know, valuation aside, it comes to us if there's a, if there is some sort of a, um, you know, maybe it's sixty percent. So if there's a, you know, public hearing, we talk about it, and then we do it on a case-by-case basis, basis and consider impacts and, you know, it seems just like any other project. But I, I really do think we should have a, a standard across the board for all non-conforming.
I understand where you're coming from. I think the reason why this situation has been set aside in the past, there's been public concern before about setting a limit on additions and, uh, so I was very careful with this one. I think it's this idea that a bunch of these older buildings with these one-car garages, they're in the back of the property. And so changes to the residence, uh, the fifty, fifty percent may not be enough, you know, I, I don't really know, you know, I'm just theorizing here based upon the idea of where this exemption came from. The idea was that it would be too problematic, too, too burdensome for someone with a single-family garage, single residence built that long ago with the garage in the back to add a parking space. So if, if that's the situation, then maybe we do that, maybe we have exceptions. So the, uh, the big thing that I, I've never agreed with this exemption on is that you could tear down the house right now.
Yeah.
And you can have the exemption again. So that's what I was focused on.
I agree with that.
But then, how do you measure that? That's, that's the challenge is, is that exterior walls? Is that alterations? And that, that's?
I, I, there's a couple, okay, I'm, I'm gonna throw out a couple things. Uh, I, I happen to know that, um, and maybe, uh, Barton and Zen have done work in the city of Claremont. Claremont has a pretty clear rule on this, and when it comes to this sort of use and expansions. And maybe we can look at that, you know, maybe there's somebody on, on the call from the planning department that has familiarity with this as well. So maybe we start there. All I'm, all I'm saying is, we, we need, we need a, we need something to drop from, so it's not just willy-nilly. Every project is looked at differently, and that's fine, but we have to have standards that we can, you know, go to, and then from there, if there's an exception needed, then we talk about it.
Okay. I ask, I think I got enough feedback, I ask that we keep moving, cause we have a couple other items.
Trying to come up with here is to get away from the walls and all that stuff, just go to that fifty percent rule, make it clear and concise and simple for the, for the guys at the counter and everything else trying to work through everyday business, that's why I think it's a good move.
And I, I understand you wanna move on, Chris, but I, I'm still a little at a loss as to what we're going for here, right? These, these houses are older, you know, if they're a historic house, then they're gonna stay right the way they are, you know, period. But are we saying that these should be in compliance or not? And if they need a lot of work to get into compliance, is that, is that the, is that what we wanna see in the city? Or is what we wanna see is these, you know, houses, some of them very quaint, some of them a little run down, that they can remain? And in which case, we wanna make it as, as kind of as liberal as possible and say, you know, you don't have to update it at all? I'm just, I'm not, I, I just, I'm, I kinda hear different things. It's, you know, usually we wanna bring people into compliance, but are we saying we wanna keep these the way they are? Do we wanna say we wanna bring them in compliance? Do we wanna say we want, wanna make them historic structures? Cause that, you know, some of them could be historic structures now, in which case they would be preserved, you know, except for the ones that maybe don't fit the bill of historic structure. So, uh, that, you know, we can talk a lot about what we can do, but what we do do is gonna drive some, some, you know, some behavior in the city, it's gonna drive some outcome in the city. I wanna make sure we're hitting the right outcome, and maybe I'm missing it here, maybe, maybe everybody knows but me, and everyone, and everyone gets it but me, but, you know, I keep asking, what do we wanna see here with these kinds of homes? Do we wanna preserve them? Do we wanna move them onto something else? Uh, I'd like to hear on, on the commissioners on that.
An accessory, uh, dwelling type issue here for structures to be only, and, and what he's trying to do is get away with the, the, the problems of how you calculate it with walls and decks and interior out there, and he just said, okay, set a percentage of a K to the structure and beyond that, you better bring it all up the code. And so what he said here is fifty percent of a value, and it kind of gets away from all the determinations of interior bald exterior walls of an access, accessory structure.
So tell me, let me, let me, let me pause you at the pause button just for a moment. So maybe you or Chris could tell me, if we do that, if we, if we put that in and say fifty percent of the cost of it, what's going to happen? But what would we expect to happen in general with these kinds of structures? And is that what we wanna see in the city?
Can I, can I address that? I think it comes down to a, a simple question that, that I keep coming back to. Should people be able to completely tear down a quaint house that is a part of a neighborhood that was built fifty, sixty years ago with a single-car garage? Should they be able to take a bulldozer and run it over and be able to keep a single-car garage?
Uh, to me, the answer is no. You bulldoze it down, you're starting over, right?
Okay, uh, I'm, I'm gonna jump in real quick, um, and kind of go with Chris. If somebody takes one of these houses, bulldozes it down, builds a new house, has the neighborhood's parking issues affected at all? No, it's a single-family house, it's a single-car garage, just like it, it has been for sixty years. It's almost like having a, um, an exemption from the parking requirement on that lot. Does it hurt the neighborhood? It'd be nice to have the extra parking space. If it's in the rear, uh, they've got a longer driveway than anybody with a front-loading garage and can stack three, four cars in there. What's the impact on the neighborhood? That's what we've got to focus on and, uh, determine, is there one? Is it negative? Or is it actually something, um, that we're doing that won't allow these to be remodeled and hurts the neighborhood over the long run by keeping these old houses that may or may not be maintained? So, um, I mean, the state's already shown us that, that they don't care about parking on property. I mean, the same house could have a, a ADU, um, and not provide any additional parking. That impacts the neighborhood more than, but I'm gonna have the one-car garage. So we need to make that land-use decision rather than worrying about all this little stuff. And once we make that decision, then we craft this, uh, the ordinance accordingly. And, uh, Chris, would you say it's a huge negative impact to a neighborhood if these, um, lots are allowed to maintain their non-conforming garage? And still, uh, still just basically rebuild a single-family house?
I think considering that some homes are occupied by more than one family, if someone were to tear down a house and enlarge the house and may potentially have more occupant, having more parking could be a good thing. But I think that's kind of a side issue for me, I, I think part of this comes down to fairness. If I am building a brand-new property, I need to have two-car garage. If I have a property that was built sixty years ago and I have a single-car garage, I can continue to have a single-car garage indefinitely. At what point does the city think it's fair to require everybody to be treated the same? That, that's, it's a, non-conforming ordinances are tricky, city to city, because it, it only is based upon what is fair. Now, what point is it fair to make somebody follow the rules that somebody else has already had to follow?
Well, you know what, Chris, that is, in the planning world, that has been a, a discussion that's gone on since the beginning of time. So if I may, I'll make a comment about this. If the developer's gonna come, if, if somebody's gonna come in and purchase a property and they see a loophole in, in our code, uh, they've gotta detach a single-car garage and they're gonna demo the whole house and think that they can, you know, get away with, um, you know, just putting, remaining, uh, with just one car? To me, that, yeah, it's a discussion about fairness, but somebody's trying to kind of cheat the system, but it's, is it really cheating the system if our code allows it? That's why when we make changes like this, when we have discussions like this, there should be visibility to all parts, cause every little standard we have connects to another. And if we have continuity throughout our development code, then we have protections in place. So if, if we change the rule, say, well, if you come in and you demolish the primary structure on the property, being the house itself, and you've got an ancillary component, uh, the single-car garage, you shouldn't be able, you should, we should see that diff, we should look at that differently. It shouldn't be a loophole. You should now, cause you've removed the primary structure on the property. Just because you left up, left the, uh, you know, the, the single-car garage there, you shouldn't be allowed to build a new magnificent structure on there and still have just the one-car garage and the requirement for just one car. That's the burden that falls on the developer. It shouldn't be a loophole. That's where I think there's, there's a, there's a problem.
And I'll, I'll, I'll take a look at what other cities do. I'll, I'll just say that my work on this goes back to the one-wall standing issue.
Right.
That's, that what prompted the rewriting of the non-conforming ordinance. Someone kept the wall up, and then they didn't, they said that, nope, my home is not torn down, there is one wall.
Okay.
And I can get a little trick, what's that?
Of the primary structure, that's what we need to find out. And then we need to have a discussion about it, cause I think that, I think that's valid, Chris. The one-wall, yeah, that's been going on for years, absolutely. But if, if somebody's gonna walk, walk into a neighborhood that has a certain character and scale and demo, you know, the little, you know, bungalow that's there, and shoehorn a gigantic box in there that goes from property line to property line and keeps a single-car garage and puts some lipstick on it, and suddenly, you know, they've kind of, you know, they found a loophole. And it should be the primary, it should be the primary use on the property. One-wall, if they leave that up, you know, can work with that. But if they're gonna leave a shed on the property and think that they can, you know, not, you know, adhere to the development standards for new development, that's a new project. It's clearly a new project. So I think it's worthy of discussion. We gotta protect the neighborhood.
So let me, let me jump in, I, I'll, I'll make it short, okay? Uh, I'm with you, if someone has a single-car garage in the backyard, by the way, the exemption also applied to people of single-car garage in the front, right? So if someone wants to, uh, demolish the whole house and, and, and build a, a much larger home, and the occupants, um, very likely will be increased and there will be more traffic. So in that case, uh, we should bring that into, um, compliance. But, uh, my, my little issue with your proposed language is that it's not friendly to a homeowner. At the very beginning, people have no way to know if they're gonna, um, hit that a hundred percent threshold if you use value. Well, there are two values that we need to calculate, and the first one is the replacement cost of the existing house. The second value is the, the estimated value of the improvement. Unless those numbers are published by our building department in a very simple way, then people need to jump into a hoop and they need a design to certain point so they can hire some estimator to get an idea whether they will be, will be required to add a second parking or not. or not. And that's not, that's not good. I like homeowners or people to know at the very beginning whether they will be required to have a second parking space or not. So either we have a very simple method of evaluation of existing house and the improvements, or we just use some simpler metric such as the floor space.
Okay, I'll have to come back to this one. I'll think about it. Oh, Commissioner, are you still, I think I have a delay online, are you still?
I'm still here.
Okay, are you done commenting?
I'm done.
Okay. So the next item relates to demolition of accessory structures and when they should be brought into compliance. I also was suggesting replacement cost. In this case, I have a stronger opinion about it because of all the complexities that go on with accessory structures, you're talking about walls, decks, patio covers, arbors, gazebos, they're all different. So to have, I'm not seeing a common way to measure them. Like some do we measure by area, some do we measure by linear footage? That's what I was, I wasn't seeing an easy way to do that. So that's why I left with replacement cost. Are there any concerns or comments about this?
My comment's the same, really, it's just, we need to find, you know, we need to find that way to measure that area, you know? I think that's, because that's something that we can do. We can measure the area, if it's square inches, square feet, whatever it is. It seems to be more logical approach to this, just from my perspective, replacement costs. Chris, help me here, I feel like we're delving into an area that's outside of our purview, you know? What it costs to replace something changes from person to person, you know, evaluator to evaluator, but the physical, you know, characteristics of something are something that we, you know, we look at as a commission. We look at, we look at height, you know, size, FAR, all of that stuff is, you know, what we're most interested in. So it's a tough one.
Well, I'm going to jump in. As long as a value is published and the building department has them for home construction, they say, you know, it's going to be, all houses are going to be estimated 125 bucks a foot, whatever is established for new construction. It could be done the same as Chris has mentioned here and if it was published and it doesn't matter if it's a realistic number, as long as it's in proportion to each of the types, you know, that an arbor is one third the cost of a second floor deck. Doesn't matter if it's a realistic number or not, as long as the proportion's right. I think the replacement cost is a viable way to go.
Well, if we have that, if we have that in play and that is current, kept up to date.
Well, it doesn't have to be a current number, as long as the proportion is right. In other words, yeah, some guy may be able to get his arbor built for 25 bucks a foot, but if it's established that we're going to base this analysis on 100 bucks a foot, it's going to be on 100 bucks a foot. Has nothing to do with what the actual cost of the work is. And that's how they do building permits.
Yeah.
I can build a bungalow for, you know, 100 bucks a foot and a mansion for 400 bucks a foot, but the building code is going to evaluate my permit fee at one number.
I understand, Bart, with all due respect, I appreciate that, but the thing is, when we're talking about permit fees versus, you know, land use, we're talking about, again, you know, physical characteristics of something, you know, its height, width, setbacks, all of these things, you know, we have to have some sort of a gauge. And if that's the way we're going to do it, I don't know. It's just, to me, it's always been, it's been just ripe for error because of, you know, lumber costs and copper costs and steel, all these things that fluctuate, but we don't always see, you know, an update to those published standards. We don't see that. Sometimes it's...
But I guess what I'm coming at is, if a guy wants to build a stick-built house with flatboard siding and a composition roof, and another guy wants to build the exact same thing with mahogany and a copper roof, should they be different? No. Should they pay differently? No. Not because one guy's using nice materials and the other guy's not. It should be on the size of the structure.
What's the percent of code?
I would, I would support a value approach if we have a published schedule. For example, the baseline number would be for an enclosed space per square foot, whatever that number is. And the building department can update it annually or every couple of years, quite 100. Covered outdoor space, 50% of that. Standalone walls, 25% of whatever that is. So that gives the people a very clear idea at the very beginning, you know, whether they're required, they would hit that threshold or not.
Same logic they were applying to the house in the paragraph in front. It's kind of a very standard way like Bart brings up, that the building department comes up with, for when you've demolished the whole house with this extension. So that's a fairly simple way to do it. Keep it simple is the way to go. When you get into the nonconforming chapter, when we updated it eight or 10 years, it took 16 hours, Chris White tried to work on it too. Remember that, Bart? Yeah?
Oh, yeah.
But if we want to, if we want to use the same baseline number for the replacement, for the existing house replacement and for the proposed improvement, then the value approach would be the same as the floor area approach. They're the same thing.
Hey, you just said the value is $1 per square foot and the proportions are still the same.
If that matches, that's ideal, but this one needs to match. Just apply the same model to something else, pole signs, okay? If that applies there and it works, then great, then we use that model. I think we should use that model consistently so there's, you know, there's continuity in our, in how we regulate nonconforming.
So, excuse me, so it's a few minutes after seven. I know we've been talking about this issue for a while. Chris, if you've got enough from us on this, we're going to have to come, obviously revisit, you know, a portion of this at another study session. But if you've got enough from us, then maybe we could wrap that, wrap this up for today. And, but you tell us if you need anything else from us.
I don't think I need anything on this item. I do want to ask Gabriel about the timing of the meeting and whether time is wrapped up to discuss any other items.
Yeah, Chris, you might want to lay out how much more you need to cover and how much time you think it's going to take to cover that? Because there's also the accessory dwelling unit section. And we don't have the regular planning commission meeting at 7 o'clock, so we could continue, but I would recommend, you know, the commission that we think about that timing as well, if you're willing to go past 7 o'clock.
I only need 10 minutes to go over the next item.
All right, so why don't we continue to 7:20, let them be here till 7:20? And Chris, we'll keep moving forward.
Thank you. So the next item is related to the review of additions to nonconforming structures. Currently, a minor architectural permit or a staff waiver is required for an addition to a nonconforming structure. We have processed, I have here, a total of 30 staff waivers and 12 minor architectural permits over five years in which, and this is a portion of them, that were entirely in conformance with the zoning ordinance. There's no minor exception permits approved, they were all approved. There was no major change in outcome as a result of a public hearing. There was no appeals. There were, no, as far as I understand, there's a consistent understanding of staff that these typically are items that take more time. There is more time that outweighs what appears to be public benefit of having hearings through this process. The idea of a public hearing process, there's more than one reason for it, but ultimately the reason why a public hearing process was required for these projects was the potential of concern. And so staff is recommending that for projects under 50%, that they would be, that they could be reviewed at a staff level through a building permit with the understanding that they would be entirely in conformance with the zoning code, they would not be in the architectural overlay, they would not be abutting historic structures, and they would be under 50%. So that's staff's recommendation.
I agree, I support that. I think that's pretty, keep it simple, unless maybe encourage more people to update some of their houses. I think that's great.
Crandall also agrees.
And you said, how many, you had about 30 that had gone to a review and there were no changes or anything like that as a result of the review?
So staff processed 30 staff waivers, so those are all done at a staff level. Those are projects that are typically 500 square feet or less that don't increase the height of a dwelling. And then there's 12 minor architectural permits that were processed and all of those were approved over five years. So that averages seven types of applications reviewed a year. I can, I have two of these right now. They take a good amount of time and time is limited. So I think that's the way staff would encourage the commission to think about it. Do we get, do we get the value of staff time on this type of process?
So, let's pick the value of staff time on the ones that are going up to the 2100 square feet limit, Davis Park, Crandall, Moab Hill, there. And let these things become administrative, they're handled at the counter. That's what I'm supporting.
So you're talking page 31, right? 31 of 78? Am I correct? Attachment six?
Page 30.
Page 30 summarizes the current situation.
I'm just wondering, I mean, allowing, you know, reducing staff time and allowing staff to assess it is good for everybody if it's, doesn't produce problems. I'm just trying to get an understanding of what we've seen. And you're saying in the last five years, there have been 12 minor architectural permits, if I'm understanding correctly, there have been 12 minor architectural permits that have gone to planning?
And 30 staff waivers, 42 total.
12 minor architectural permits that did not involve any minor exceptions or involved architectural overlay or historic structures being near historic structures. So strictly additions to nonconforming structures with projects that entirely conform to the zoning ordinance.
And you've had 12 of those?
Yes.
Okay. And there were no issues with them, no problems, no special considerations that were needed?
My understanding is no issues that are germane to the findings. Like there are, at times, people saying that they didn't like that a project blocked their view or they didn't like where a window was and there is an issue about a light on a project, something like that, that wasn't directly tied to the findings. And there are, we don't have a view protection ordinance, we don't have regulations that control where a window can be in relationship to another window. We don't have, like a lighting issue, we have the dark sky policy and we have lighting standards. So those issues are not directly tied to the findings that are associated with whether someone should be expanding a nonconforming structure in character with the neighborhood and whether it's consistent with the intent of the zone. So those sort of findings, staff routinely is able to meet those findings and consistently wonders, why are we working on these? Why are we spending this much time on these applications?
Hey, Chris, I'm just going to weigh in on this again. I appreciate, I appreciate what our current process does for our community and, you know, Don's point, you know, it's moving projects along and you throw out a number, you know, whatever that number is, you know, it sounds like it's a healthy progression and, you know, and movement forward, folks are getting through these pretty quickly. And I definitely am all about that and I definitely think that it's good to find ways to, you know, foster improvement to properties and, you know, and help our residents do what they need to do in a way that's not confusing or cost prohibitive or time prohibitive. But in terms of, you know, continuity and structure to our code, again, you know, we have the same sort of language in here that talks about the value of a project and 50%. I'm just pointing out another area that is, you know, you know, that it's a good, it's a good place to start when it comes to tying our standards together, making sure that there's the same sort of set of rules applied to everything. And if we have exceptions or if there's an additional step to take for an applicant, I don't know that our number would have changed any. I mean, it's hard to say. So if we had, how many did you say went through last year? Was it 12?
Last year, we had, we had two in 2019, minor architectural permits and one staff waiver.
Okay. Well, I mean, would it be any different if we took a closer look at a project that, you know, there's an extra step? I mean, to have a, just a wholesale application to these, I mean, all I'm saying is, there should be a discussion on some continuity in our language. If we're going to, you know, based on value here, we should be based on value everywhere else. I mean, if it's going to be an expansion of a property physically that breaches that threshold, whatever it is, if it's 50% physical, you know, change to the, to the structure or a property, then, you know, it's subject to a, you know, XYZ set of, you know, processes, whatever it is.
Yes, to be clear, what staff's recommending is that if, if buildings are expanded 50% or greater, then they must be made conforming. The only exception are single-family residences that are 1,400 square feet or smaller. They can be expanded over 50% up to 2,100 square feet. That would continue to require zoning administrator approval. That would continue to require zoning administrator approval, so that would continue the existing process.
Okay.
That's why I support it. I think it's, it moves a lot of stuff through the system, and we can upgrade our, our communities and neighborhoods faster. So I'm just saying.
So, so with this, you know, those are small houses, and I don't see much of a problem with that. What about a three thousand, four thousand square foot house that is doing a forty-nine percent?
That's a little different category.
Change. It's under fifty percent? What we're saying is, my understanding is, is four thousand square foot house was, is a bit large, but we've got plenty of houses that are, that are big here. They can expand that by two thousand square feet, and, or almost, you know, one thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square feet. And they don't need, you know, they got purely a staff review, they don't need ZA approval, they don't need to come to planning commission. So that's, you know, is that a concern we should have?
It's just continuity. It's fairness. I mean, for everybody. Maybe, you know, maybe our housing stock is, you know, majority of it is under that threshold. And then we've got, you know, you know, we've got a smaller percentage, but yeah, they're, they're much larger properties, much larger dwelling units, and maybe our frequency of expansions is lower with those. But their rights should be the same. I don't see any different, I just don't see why.
There is, there is a minimum, right? I mean, when you're talking someone who can maybe do nearly two thousand feet expansion, and they have to go through the same review of someone doing a five hundred foot expansion, it starts, it's like, well, you're practically, you know, for some people, that's a new house, right? Two thousand feet. They're essentially building a new house, and they don't need any review, they don't need any, you know, how does that impact the neighborhood? In two thousand square feet, how many new bedrooms can you put in? How many, you know, you know, how many architectural changes are you gonna have that can affect other places? You know, that's, I don't, I'm, I'm just, I'm asking the question, because it's not, you know, here, what's written here for the size of these structures, it all looks fine. But we've got other sized structures where that same percentage is gonna have much more, it's gonna have a qualitatively different, or could have, potentially, a qualitatively different impact, even if it's the same percentages.
And we're talking conforming versus nonconforming, though, just to make sure we, you know, but that's valid. Absolutely. So there should be some continuity there. Absolutely.
I'd support this loosening or deregulation. It's gonna make it a little easier for people to improve their property. So I think, based on the limited number of the cases in the past five years, and the limited impact to the neighborhood, I would support it. Although I think Chair Ruline has a valid point. So perhaps we can add a cap to the absolute number of the floor area, for example, a thousand square feet or something, in addition to the fifty percent cap.
So staff just wants to point out that additions are measured cumulatively since nineteen ninety-six.
And what Chris is saying there is that, if you think there's a four thousand square foot house, one, it's probably not gonna be nonconforming, so it doesn't fall under this category to do a two thousand addition. If it is nonconforming, and they've done one remodel already, they can't do another one that exceeds the fifty percent.
Right.
Chris, do you have a chart of this twelve, or whatever number of the cases in the past five years? Do you know how much they expanded, on average? Or what's the distribution? What is the maximum? What is the minimum? What is the average?
I do not have the statistics right now, but I do have a list in front of me. I, I know that generally, they've been homes that are west of the five freeway, and they're often not McMansions. They're projects that, I'm looking at the numbers, they range from three hundred square feet to, here's one, up to nine hundred and sixty-three square feet, on Avenue De La Paz.
Well, this is why the physical component is super important to Bart's point. I, I hear that is, yes, we should pay attention to the, you know, the size of the expansion versus the value of it.
So let me suggest this. It sounds to me like, at least in general philosophy, there's, there's a good consensus that we agree with where we're going with this, and certainly with the size of the examples that are in here. My concerns are more with sort of east of the five, as some of these homes, say, in Talega, start to age out a little bit. They're, you know, they're getting to be twenty years old, even some thirty, maybe. So people are gonna start remodeling, and, you know, maybe we might get, you know, there's a concern about wholesale, you know, expansion there. But there are a lot of coverage rules, and, you know, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna plan for a problem that doesn't exist and may never exist. So I wanted to bring up a concern, 'cause it was a concern, but maybe Chris has enough to put a bow on this. And, you know, I guess I'll be content with that. I don't think that there's a roaring desire to worry about, you know, four thousand square foot houses, houses in this context. So maybe that's, it's time to move on a little bit from that. So, I don't know. Does anyone have anything else to contribute for Chris? Does anyone else have something they want Chris to take away?
Seeing those numbers, so I don't like to know, know those numbers.
I can provide those to the commission.
Okay.
Okay. What is the maximum number? If you can just quickly flip through it. You just mentioned something is nine hundred or something.
I think I would rather look at these and give you, give you something better than just reading it off. From what I can tell, the biggest right now that I can see is nine hundred and sixty-three square feet. But I think, to give you an accurate number, I'm gonna need a little bit more time to look at it.
Okay. So if, if nine, nine hundred something were the maximum, out of that dozen cases, then putting a cap of a thousand square feet would not prevent any of them if it were happening in the future, and would also address that a little, that concern from Commissioner Ruline, or Chair Ruline.
I think I can, at the next meeting, I can explain why I don't think that the homes east of the freeway are a large concern to staff. There are reasons for that.
If you, if it doesn't take much time, and you can give an explanation for that, you know, for, for our comfort, if, for nothing else, then that would be appreciated.
Now, keeping in mind, we're talking about conforming versus nonconforming, right? So anything that's conforming, it's kind of out of the discussion. We're talking about nonconforming, a little clearer.
Yep.
Thank you for that, but...
All right. Thank you very much, Christopher. And unless Jennifer, Christopher, or Gabriel, if you've got something of burning urgency, we can maybe continue this to the next study session, and, and wrap up the meeting. What's your pleasure?
Chairman Ruline and commissioners, I'd like to just ask Jennifer, just if you could mention to the commission what's next to cover, and if they would like to cover it now, or maybe till another study session.
This is Jennifer. The next subject area is accessory dwelling units. And we are largely, largely directed by state law to make specific modifications to our code. And that's a very quick summary. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah. I looked at this whole thing. It's pretty much a, the way the cards have been dealt to us, we don't have a lot of wiggle room here. And the people up in Sacramento are getting really good at writing very detailed state laws. And you're talking about a particular setbacks for four feet or five feet and all that. So when you read this whole thing, it's pretty well, what we, what we see, what we get, we have a lot of choice to it. The one area I do have a concern was, was on occupancy. And on page sixty-four, and there's a, there's a window there from about now, January nineteen tw- twenty twenty to January twenty-five, where you have an ADU permitted, but in this current five-year window, you don't have to have, you know, it's not subject to any own occupancy requirements, that everything is done before it. And the only thing that that raises a little trigger with me is, was comes, even though the ordinance says you can't, you know, rent these things, you know, in below thirty days, and all that stuff, in the ordinance and stuff, we've got issues too. But I just, all of a sudden, there's BRVOs and sober living homes because of no owner occupancy. And should we put some hook in there that says, yea, verily, you know, a total rental property type thing? We have total, right, they get TOT taxes, Jennifer, all this stuff, they need to sign up, all that stuff. We need it. My only problem is, pretty soon, we have this wealth industry again, like we had several years ago.
Thank you. And just to note that ADUs cannot be rented for less than thirty days.
Correct.
So from a vacation rental type scenario, you'd be a lot less likely to run into that with that rental day limitation.
I would have sober living homes.
Jennifer, this is...
Go ahead.
Jennifer, this is Zain. Overall, I like this revision.
Excuse me, Commissioner Ruline, I don't think Commissioner Brown got an answer to his question.
Oh, okay.
Yes. And if I wouldn't maybe reach out to Gabriel to help me identify whether sober living homes require any type of review with the city currently. However, if they don't, which I believe is consistent with state law, there is no opportunity for us to limit the ADUs to not being the sober living home.
Okay, that's, that's the section, pretty good. I mean, there's nothing we can do about it. This area has potential of a concern, but let's not have a sermon on the mountain. I'm ready to begin.
Commissioner Ruline, did you have something to add?
Yes, Jennifer. Overall, I support this revision. This is, much of it is driven by state law, so there's not much to talk about. And I do have two, two minor questions I'd like to get a clarification on. Page sixty-two, item two point B, point two. When there is a, for the, for example, a single-family home that needs discretionary review, at the same time, an ADU is proposed. Is the city allowed to review, is the city allowed to consider the impact of the ADU when they review the main project?
Uh, no, it's, it's not discretionary. It would have to be processed ministerially. So, giving you a little more detail, so if you're looking at a discretionary application for a new single-family dwelling, a lot of your considerations are potentially discretionary. There are some more objective standards that you're looking at. So that being said, because an ADU or JDU cannot be discretionary, that the impact of the ADU or JDU could not be considered in consideration with the new single-family dwelling.
So the project would be reviewed with or without ADU in exact the same way?
Correct.
Okay. The second question is on the next page, talking about a connection fee. What is the current city's sewer fee? Last time I heard about it, it was exhausting the number. Has the city fixed it?
So my understanding is, at this time, the, there is a moratorium on charging that fee. And I don't know the status of a solution to correct that. But we can definitely find that out and provide that information at a future date.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Anything else on the ADU ordinance, part of the ordinance? All right. Then, is there anything else that staff has for us? Gabriel? Jennifer?
That was it for the evening's study session. And I'll let Gabriel jump in if he has anything else.
All right. Chairman and planning commissioners, that's it. I know that's the second batch of code amendments that Pliant Division has to present. And I believe we have enough information gathered from the past two study sessions to present something back to the Pliant Commission at a future hearing, and there's direction that we received, unless I'm, you know, unless I'm misunderstanding. And, you know, I just wanna also ask Jennifer if you believe you have everything you need, based on this day's session and the last day's session.
Thank you. And I need to correct the record. For the ADUs, we actually did receive a public comment on the proposed ordinance. And it brings up, we've received one public written, sorry, we received one written public comment. We've also received some input verbally as well. And the public comment has concerns about whether the ADU can or cannot be in front of a single-family dwelling. And there are some development standards that we carried over from our existing ordinance into the proposed ordinance that relate to whether, well, specifically that an ADU cannot be within, in front of a single-family dwelling. The second concern that was raised verbally was whether or not we should continue the difficulty with putting a NADU over a garage. And so there was concern in previous iterations of our ordinance that a property owner could not put a NADU over a garage. As our provisions are currently written, it would allow, it would prohibit an ADU in front of a single-family residence in most instances, and would not allow an ADU to be constructed over, say, a detached garage. But at the very end of the provision, it does allow an applicant to apply for a discretionary application, such as a conditional use permit, to provide an ADU in either of those instances, either in front of a, a single-family dwelling, or above a detached garage, which would be greater than sixteen feet. So given those two provisions that we did have comments on, would the commission recommend any changes or provide any direction for changes to write into the existing code to allow an ADU into, in front of a residence or on top of a garage, without a discretionary permit? Or does it make sense to require a use permit in either of those cases?
I see some nodding heads. I, and I, I think people are saying, yes, we probably should have a discretionary permit in those, in those cases, and I would agree.
I concur.
Great.
Yep, I agree.
Great, thank you. So then to answer Gabriel's question, yes, we have everything we need.
I, I do. Jim, if I may make a comment generally, as it relates to our code amendments and our focus areas, I wanted to maybe hand this over to Gabriel. I noticed something in our code. Is Chris still on the call? Chris Wright?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still on the, well, Chris who? Yeah, I'm, I'm still on the, well, Chris who? Where's Chris?
Chris.
Chris Wright's on the call.
He's, yeah, Chris Wright.
Yeah.
Not Chichinski. Okay, well, Chris, he has, you know, background in wireless, but what I noticed in our, in our code is that when we have, you know, when we have a, we have a maximum height limit in a particular zone, and we have architectural elements that are allowed to exceed that height limit, we have a situation where if a new use comes in, we, that new use is able to, to integrate into that existing structure and exceed a height limit that would normally be in place for any new development. And maybe it's a later discussion, but I, it just haunts me every time I see that, and many cities have this, where you've got a, say, for example, a telecommunications service provider would come in and identify a structure, a commercial zone, and there may be a limit to height, but that, that particular existing structure is, you know, 10 feet above the allowable height limit for new structures, and, you know, maybe there's an elevator shaft, or stairwell, or steeple element, and a new use can be established by attaching to that existing structure that may be over the height limit. At what point do we stop and take a look at this, when we're establishing a new use on a property through, you know, discretionary permit, conditional use permit, whatever it is? But we're allowing that new use to exceed the height limit for that zone because that particular existing structure has elements that are above the height limit? Shouldn't that new use be subject to the development standards if it was standing alone? It's a new use. So we've got a, you know, a commercial building, maybe it's a, you know, a, you know, a florist, and they've got a, you know, tall building in town, and somebody comes in and wants to put some wireless antennas on the roof, you know, on an element of the building that is 10 feet above the height limit for a new use in the zone, but they're able to do it. Why aren't we addressing that? Why are there, why aren't we addressing that?
Gabriel, you're on mute.
I haven't gotten to it yet.
Commissioner Blackwell, you're referring to a particular section of the code that explicitly allows that? Are you talking about wireless specifically?
Well, it could be wireless, not to, not to limit it to wireless, but that would be, you know, a great example.
Yes. I, forgive me, but I'm a little bit concerned because the, it's a public meeting, and the agenda for the item was, you know, was the zoning ordinance.
Understood.
Amendments are specific here. I'm not saying that your question is irrelevant, but maybe take it offline, or, or something like that, or...
It's just oops or bye, in, in closing. I appreciate that, and thank you, Jim, for pointing out, you're correct. I, I don't mean to have a full discussion on, on something new. I'm just saying that there is, there's, there's a section in, you know, worthy of discussion in our code. We're talking about amendments, but maybe this is something that we can consider down the road for, for the discussion.
Yeah, okay, sounds good. Commissioner Blackwell, I'll, I'll give you a call just to follow up with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, that, that's the only item we have on our agenda, so we can entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. We adjourn to the next regular meeting of the study session, and final commission will be held on August 19, 2020, at 6:00 P.M. You'll teleconference.
Second, Chichinski. Motion by Commissioner Crandall, second by Commissioner Chizinski. I'll call the roll here. Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chizinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Wook?
Aye.
And Jim Ruline votes aye. It's unanimous, and we are adjourned until our next meeting. Nice evening, everyone.
Thank you.